I'd like to call this meeting to order. Mass General Laws, Chapter 38, Section 20 hereby informing all attendees that a video and audio recording will be made of the meeting. First up, Kathy. Got her clipboard. She's got a lot for us.
I know. It's just going to come at times. She's got to bring this rooster in. Otherwise, we're not going to let her in here.
The roosters aren't allowed in town anymore.
Well, it's kind of a joke.
292.1.
I got, it does say video.
Restart, maybe?
Matt, do you have video? Oh, I thought I heard.
He's out. That was Conrad.
Oh, Conrad, do you have video?
I do have video, yes. Can you hear me? I can see you. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you, yep.
We don't have video of ourselves, but that's okay.
Yeah, I do have full video.
Eighty percent working at this point.
Okay. All right, Kathy.
So, Kathy Hall from the... And I'm happy to say that the ice rink is put up, but we had a couple of little glitches. As we were putting the water, some of the sides were kind of caving in. So, we're waiting to see if with this cold weather, it has expanded and will be okay. So, once we know that it's skating, we'll make sure that it's put on the town website and we'll also put on a... So, we're happy that it's up. It's 60 feet. So, as soon as we know everything... And that kind of stuff. So, once we know everything's in okay, we will make sure it's on the town website and then we'll...
Great. That's great.
Thank you.
Yes. Thanks to the volunteers we have. In 2015, 16 volunteers plus the Dino brought the material to the... Because it had been in storage for quite a while. Put the water into...
Excellent.
Thank you, thank you to them.
Better using the water for that than what sometimes they have to use it for, right? Okay, moving on. Update on the master plan meeting. Peter?
I think the biggest news is that we are not having a public forum next week or at the end of this week, as I had previously said. Turned out that we had a lot more complications in planning it than we expected. And it looks like it's going to be at the earliest now, I would say the end of January, possibly February. We're also working on a survey, a town survey. And the interaction between the survey and the forum was one of the issues that complicated things. But we hadn't really done enough advertising to feel that we were ready to go forward with a group. And then we got some late ideas about how to run the meeting in terms of whether there would be just sort of a town hall format with everybody together or whether we would break it up into what they call discussion groups or, I don't know what they call it, but, you know, little parties within the group and then coming back and reporting back. So, Sean Renier is in charge of this whole project and he's working that all out. There's a meeting scheduled for this week to work on the details. And we still have a vacancy from the resignation of Kirk Nichols, who resigned, I think I told you, two meetings ago. And I had asked if the school committee wanted to have another replacement, and I have not heard back from Betsy Strickler. She individually prefers to have a student assigned, and she has spoken with the principal of the high school to have a student picked, and I haven't heard a word. So, I'm not in a position to recommend any replacement for Kirk as an additional member of the master plan committee, but I am recommending that Gail Cerise be appointed to the committee. She has shown a continuing interest. She has attended at least two of the last meetings, and she's been quite disappointed when I told her that we were already a complement. But now we have a vacancy and the school board hasn't been filling it. And I feel like I can't say no to Gail longer so I move that Gail Cerise be appointed to the master plan committee.
I would second that, Peter.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? You're confident with that, Peter?
Yeah, we've been getting along pretty well. I think we can manage.
Okay. Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Peg?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
I've got him on aye.
And we are progressing through a range of issues. We have Chris Skelly, who has been working with us. But now we have a new guy who is nominally Chris's boss at the Regional Planning Commission, a guy named CJ Hoss. And CJ has really turned out to be enormously helpful, even in his first meeting. He came and participated a lot in the meeting. He came, he's had, he's been through this a lot of times, this process of master plan writing, and he had some really good ideas that I'm really happy to have. And so, I feel like we're getting good support from the regional planning people. Just today, Chris Skelly wrote to a few town officials introducing himself by email and saying, "I'm going to be asking for your department or your section of town to give me some information to include in the master plan." I know one of them, there were four or five of them, but I know one of them went to the greener gateway committee because my wife is the vice chair and I got copies of all these. I forwarded that one to her. And it turns out Peter Hoffman, who's the chair, has got a medical issue right now. So, he's not able to attend. So, my wife is the functioning chair. I emailed my wife. Anyway, but the point of it all is, is not my wife. The point is that the regional planning people are beginning the process of gathering information. And, you know, I'm trying to think of a metaphor that would describe how we feel, I feel about this project. I feel like if you were painting a new house, you'd want to put on primer and two coats. And we so far got the primer on one of the windows. It's a long way to go.
Long way to go.
Yeah. And so, I think for one reason is that we're not going to get the census data we need until spring. But that's not really the limitation. I think if we finished in the summer, that would be good. I'm not sure we can do that, but I'm, you know, I'm hoping that we can. But it's going to be a long process and everybody, I think, recognizes that now more than they did before. We've got a history section that Susan Stone is working on and has nearly completed. We've got housing data and had housing meetings. We met with Lenny Tisdale last week to hear about how the work stuff is being done in town. And so, I think what I'm going to do is, as we meet every month, I'm going to bring in somebody else to talk with, probably the chamber next time, just so we get a better idea of what the businesses are in town and what they're feeling good about and what they're feeling not so good about, about the town. Kathy, do you want to augment anything I've said? Okay.
It's really going very well slowly, but it aids you because I want to make sure we're really doing a good thing to like work.
Thanks. Yeah, Turtles is probably optimistic.
I thought you were going to say you're still picking out colors.
Something like that.
Further along than I thought. But, I mean, Peter, you got to think, remember, the last one was around 2020.
Twenty, 2000.
2000, yeah, 2000. Yeah, 2000. And we were a different town then. I mean, the whole town revolved around the mills.
Yeah.
Economic development was everything. Now, we've gone and we've got cultural influences. We have, you know, service influences.
We're no longer predominantly a manufacturing town.
No.
We're predominantly, I guess, seems, a tourist services town. Although manufacturing is still present.
I think we're, it might come out too that we're a, I don't know, a lifestyle town? When you choose to get out of the hustle and bustle of a city, you come to the Berkshires and work from here now.
They can, which only makes the housing problem even more acute because you can't build an apartment. The cost of building an apartment building is so high now that you can't really make money on the rent that you want to be charging people for an apartment. So, the housing problem is pretty serious. And I don't know what we're going to be able to do about that in terms of recommendations. But we have had a good committee. We've got a lot of different variety of experiences. We got some people who've been in town many, many years. We've got some people that are relatively new. We got one guy who is having, is recovering from an operation right now, but he's the second homeowner. We got a retired engineer who's been here a little while. So, I think we got a good cross section and we're working together well. And so, that's my report.
Thank you.
Yeah, another discussion that we had with the selectmen just recently, it ended with, we have to somehow free up property for building lots. I mean, there's not a lot of lots that are available to build on now in town. And we have a lot of people that would like to be here.
Yeah.
So, somehow, I think all the boards are going to have to put their heads together and see, we got a lot of property that's sitting for one reason or another.
Yep.
And I won't go into reasons why.
Town land or private?
No, private.
Yeah.
Why not, why don't you go into the reasons why? Because it's too embarrassing to somebody or...
Well, as I say, I don't want to...
Is it individual facts?
I don't want to bring one board into the limelight, that's all. I mean, all of us will have to work together.
So, I agree with that. I feel like we need to talk about what sort of housing goals we have. Because I think right up to the present, the master plan committee and my interest has been the discussion in the master plan committee. Figure out what the restrictions are in the downtown, whether, some way that we can get more sort of a walkable downtown with more variety of shops, more people who are living down here, and so there's less dependence on automobiles. So, that's one view of the future. Another view of the future is more two acre lots, you know, out on all the boundaries the way we've been doing it for 40 years. And I think both of those things could be helpful, but they're definitely different futures. And I'm not sure which one the town would prefer. Do you have a thought, Dave?
Well, my only thought is, yes, we need rental units. I'm totally in agreement with that. But rental units only brings so much cash flow into town. When you build a new house, you pay taxes on that house from the day you move into, the day it becomes old and decrepit. So, it adds to the tax base all the time. Every house adds to that tax base. And we don't, you think right now, we don't have many developments that are left with property in them, buildable lots in them. They were, they're built out.
Right, right.
We know one place, right, Mo?
Although, there's still some big parcels.
But the mill has one. Again, the Greylock Mill is surrounded by property. The mill's never going to do anything.
The Greylock Street, no.
That's correct. I think there's a, I can't off the top of my head come up with an exact number, but it's got to be 32 to 40 some acres of land that surround. So...
And we've approved a marijuana growth facility up there, didn't we?
Well, we did, but that's not going to happen.
Yeah.
No, that fell through. As I say, we need to, we need both. We need, definitely need rental for younger folks, but a lot of these younger folks would just as soon own their own house.
You know, I agree that that's the ideal, but if you've got to start in the market at 350,000...
That's hard.
No, but not a lot of people are going to be able to do that. And there are several people in the committee who've said, you know, "I'd love to have my kids come back to town," but they can't afford it. So, they could afford to move into an apartment maybe and then work their way toward homeownership. But homeownership has really gotten, it's almost impossible to enter. And it's better here. One of our people moved here from Boston a few years ago and he said, "Look, I got all this extra money that showed up when I sold my house near Boston and bought it out here in the Berkshires. You think it's expensive, but it ain't." Because in Boston, it's way more expensive.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Well, you know, you bring in new blood, not that they're young blood, but they come with a pocketful of cash.
And the other thing that keep in mind is that when I talk to the school people, they seem to feel that they want more kids. So, if we build apartments, we're likely to get more kids in the schools. If we build retirement homes out in the edges, you're going to get not a lot of kids, probably.
Well, see, that's where I said, I think we need both
Yeah, yeah.
to work hand in hand.
Okay.
Well, have a parent that, an offspring moves to town in an apartment and the parents like being close to their family and have the money to build a house.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to have a piece of property that we could sell them to build up there.
Peg, I thought a minute ago you looked like you were about to say something.
I was. I think we all read that article in the Berkshire Eagle. I was going to bring it tonight about the homeless people, how in, and how hard it is for people to find options. But I also feel, I know that there is a search to put the people downtown because of what you said earlier, Peter. But I also feel that if we had large tracts of land somewhere, like David mentioned, the Greylock Mill, I think.
Yeah.
And that is like a huge tract of land.
Yeah.
Maybe be housing or maybe it could be housing and apartments or... It just seems, I know the emphasis is on downtown, but there's also... Well, I have my own opinion. And my opinion is the downtown, it's beautiful. People come to Lee. They love our downtown. And the history or the historical architectural integrity should not be diminished if we do something in the downtown area. Now, some people don't feel that way at all. The more they can put in, the better. I, it's, I'm speaking now as a personal, my opinion. I would like to see more of a balance in this, but I also, I think it would be a good idea to put your heads together, all of us somehow, maybe with the chamber or, I don't know whom, DPW, anybody, and come up maybe with some suggestions. I mean, I have friends that they say to me, "Well, if I saw my house, where am I going to go?" You know? I don't know where they're going to go. They may have another house. They may have something, but a lot of people love the town of Lee that, and they would like to stay here. But they're also, I'll just say, like, they don't want to be bothered anymore with the house, you know, or it's become...
What's your ambition, Peg? Are you envisioning like a four apartment Victorian or like the Consolati block apartments?
Well, I would love a four apartment Victorian, but I don't know if that was...
Building, you mean, or to move to?
No, no.
Type of building, type of what her vision?
Well, I don't know if it would have to be four apartments. I personally, if you want, okay, you asked my opinion. I don't like brutalistic architecture. So, I would prefer to have my own personal opinion. Something doesn't have to be perfect, but it would have to be somewhat in downtown, downtown. If people buy a block of property and they want to build whatever they want to build, that is their, in my mind, prerogative. They can do whatever they want.
To a point, but we do have input on it.
Oh, definitely. I wouldn't want, and you know what I've read about a lot is micro housing.
That's where I was going.
I mean, I don't know if...
Density, you increase density on a building and you're putting in a lot more apartments for the same space.
Yeah.
Hey, can I tell you a story and end with a question?
Sure.
The story is, I lived in Montpelier for 35 years.
Yeah.
And when I moved to Montpelier, there's two streets in Montpelier. It's a pretty small town. It's about the size of downtown here. Two streets and State Street and Main Street. And on one corner, there was this wonderful rambling Victorian wooden structure. And it burned down on New Year's Eve, I think, or Christmas Eve of 79. It had a liquor store in it and all liquor, vodka bottles were exploding. It was very, it was 20 below and it was a very exciting night. But they built after, it was, it was an empty pit for like three years. And they got this architect and he built a brick structure. It's called the city center. And it's Art Nouveau, which had nothing to do with the rest of the town. And it had, you know, blue Hollywood glass things and, and he, it was the three-story building. And unlike every building I've ever seen in my life, the second and third floor windows didn't line up above each other. They were staggered like this. It's some brilliant idea that he learned in architecture school. Heist.
Sin.
Sin to that downtown. It's just screams, you know, and it's one quarter of the main intersection. Now, up the street is a beautiful old 1857 state house and, you know, some lovely 1930 buildings that were built by insurance companies and stuff. But this thing is a monstrosity, in my opinion. So, that in mind, I would hate to see something like that come to Lee, say in, you know, in the price chop. And I will do everything I can, if there's a price chopper proposal that comes here and I'm still on the board, I will do everything I can to make sure that whatever is proposed is not have staggered windows and blue Hollywood, you know, glass fans and, and cheap aluminum crown moldings at the top. But is built with some care and beauty and attention to detail. Now, I guess I have two questions for you. You can either answer them or not as you please, but can you see big buildings coming to downtown Lee that would look nice if we did it right? Would it add to the value of the town and make it more lovable than it is now? That's the first question. The second question is, if that's, if you do want that, and that's what I want, how do we get that? Do we need to have like a historic preservation district, design review, or you know enough about this to have, be able to answer that? So, two questions, okay?
Well, a stark preservation district would have to be, we don't have, there is one in South Lee, Peter. We don't have one.
Just one building?
We don't, we don't, I think some of the, the only building I think that would be on the national register, I could be wrong and somebody can correct me, is the bank across the street.
No, that national register is not, a lot of stuff is on a national register. This, this, Morgan House is on a national register. Doesn't mean it's protected. It could be torn down tomorrow by the owner and then not, nobody in government can say a word about it. We can moan about it, but we can't stop it. I'm pretty sure. So, but how about my first question, though? I mean, can you see, is there, is there any major building that you could see being added to downtown that if done right would make the place nicer from your point of view? Or is it just that you just don't want anything built at all?
Oh, no, I want built. I've always been pro building.
Oh, okay.
I want them to be done correctly. Like, we do have, I hate to say this, but the ambulance building that was built, that to me, I mean, it went up, we paid for it, now it's whatever it is. You know, something like that, I didn't think it fit in. It was next to the fire station and I just didn't think it fit in correctly. But again, I wasn't going to...
I hear you saying, yes, you can have, we can have more buildings in downtown without, if they're done right and if they're appealing and if they fit in in terms of the overall character of the town.
Yeah, I like that. Yeah, well, on the one you're changing now, that's how it was written, you know, in the old 2000, what was it, 2000? I forget now. The year was originally done. That was written right in there. I mean, something what you're saying.
Yeah, okay.
Try not to destroy the historic character, but try to, they had all kinds of things in it that try to do what I think you're trying to do. But I also think that, like what was said, there are huge pieces of property, of few, that could be developed if the people wanted to develop them. And that might be a good thing too, to, I don't know how you look into it, get everybody together or whatever, but... Yeah, everybody's got a different vision. I mean, I would love to see certain areas of downtown, like over where the Bullseye was, developed more. I would, I would love.
What was?
Well, it was a Bullseye.
Where the Bullseye?
A bar, whatever it's called.
They just tore it down?
Yeah.
The building, they just tore down by...
The Erolde building.
By the Erolde building?
Yeah. And they turned our back on the river for years and years and years.
Yeah, yeah.
Even to have some benches or clear places, I mean, down by the river or something. The other thing too is when we did the Eagle Mill, we didn't, but whenever, we were trying to get artists, you're talking about Art Nouveau, into certain places. Now, maybe it'll happen, maybe it won't. I don't know. I would love to see, I mean, you're asking me, so I'm just saying, I'd love to see some, we always talk about affordable housing and all these things, but I think Mass Moca in North Adams, the artists, you know, there are artist apartments where they get, I'm just saying, you know, thinking, it would bring a little bit more creativity or different things into the downtown area. I don't know how you do that, Peter.
I don't either.
And, but we can keep trying and keep hoping and keep going and, you know.
All right, thanks. That helps.
I mean, it's...
Where you guys are a little bit.
But I do think that seven, I thought somebody said it might be 70, can't be 70 acres up by the Greylock Mill, right? No, how many? 30 or 40?
Greylock Mill looks like it's 30.
30 or 40.
37.
Well, that's a lot.
Both sides of Columbia Street?
No, it's all on the same side of, actually goes onto Columbia, yes, but there's not much property.
Riverfront property down below included in that? Riverfront property down below included in that, or?
No.
Columbia Mills.
That's, that was the Columbia Mill.
That's Columbia Mill, it's Graylock. That's Graylock Mill.
I mean, my feeling is I would like to see apartment downtown. Okay, because most people, when you come into town, the youth want to be in, in the hub of the, wherever they're at. Uh, when you get a few years under your belt, now you want to move away from that hub to solitude. That's why I say it's got to work hand in hand. You know, you have, to me, if we had something that would meet the arch, match the architecture on Main Street, to look, you know, not to change the looks of Main Street, uh, but build that multiple housing apartments downtown, but open up property out of the downtown.
Individual lots.
Exactly.
Hmm.
As I say, they have to work hand in hand.
Well, it's not an easy task. Thank you.
I really appreciate your input on this.
Hey Dave, how many acres of that, uh, Graylock Mill is actually good upland land or is wetland? Do you know?
There is some wetland in there Conrad, but, uh, I'm gonna say it's under twenty-five percent is wetland. Because when you get up into the ledges that actually, uh, back up, uh, East Center Street, you know, as you head down the hill, uh, that's high and dry. Uh, the worst section for wetlands is actually around the mill and, uh, right on the street side of Graylock. I mean, it goes up to, uh, we're, we're almost behind Todd Burdick's house.
So it grades up there a little bit?
Yes, as soon as, as soon as you have an elevation change to a wetland, the water's sitting in pockets along the edge of the road because it has no place to go.
Yeah. So, uh, somebody's mentioned that the, uh, the grow facility there, that's a dead deal now?
That's correct.
Hmm.
Okay, and who owns that property now?
Uh, it's owned by the same person that actually bought it from the mill. I can't think of his name now, uh.
Hold on, I'm getting there.
Oh, he's getting there, okay.
Okay, so that property right now is owned industrial if I, if I saw it correctly on the zoning map.
I believe it is. You're correct, but I don't know if it includes the whole piece of property or if it's just the actual mill section.
All right, so to a developer, the value of the real estate right now is for industrial use because that's what the buildings are. So how do you, how do we convince somebody to take that property, invest in it? Uh, maybe there's a rehabilitation, uh, value in the buildings perhaps. Uh, but the extra land does sound like it might be appropriate for, uh, for either single family or multifamily development, correct? That's your vision?
Maybe we'd, yes, you're right. Uh, and I would say we'd have to see if that's all one piece of property because originally it was part of a farm. Um, and then became the mill. Uh, but I don't know if that, the property that surrounds the mill is part of that, it's just one piece and it's all zone industrial, or if there's any kind of split, or we could make it be a split.
Split residential, industrial resident.
Right.
What's the woods south of the, of the mill? Towards town down Graylock Street on the right, did you go toward town on right, on the right from down Graylock?
That's still, that's still, see that mill owns them. Uh, when you leave, when you leave the mill property, you look this little mole, there's a farmhouse sitting on the right. Mill property goes all the way around.
But here's the thing also, folks. Um, so Conrad, it's a company called Lee Town Development. And what a surprise, their office is in Delaware.
Yeah.
Yep, um, twenty-five acres, uh, in a, in residential and twelve acres in industrial, it looks like.
Wow.
Hey Conrad, you heard the discussion with Peg and Dave. Do you have anything to add about the master plan?
You know, you're talking about the, uh, the architectural benefits of some of these buildings, uh, I mean, many towns have a design review board and, you know, a DRB. And that could be comprised of members of planning boards, it could be some of the larger counties, like you go down to Virginia and stuff. It's, uh, the DRB is actually a, a board that's comprised of architects and engineers. And, you know, they have this, uh, they have this skill set, uh, on architectural design. Again, if you've worked in the Virginia area, you get different areas that have an architectural feature that they, they like to see. Um, many smaller towns like, like Lee, they've, the design review feature is really part of the planning board and they make judgments. It's either part of their site plan review or their, or their special permit process where they kind of dictate or at least suggest uh, what architectural features you'd like to see. Um.
You think a, a separate design review board in Lee makes sense, or do you think it makes sense to try and do it through the planning board and, and, uh,
NLDs?
Design review, NLD to site plan and special permit.
Yeah, I think, uh, I mean, it's just as close as Lenox. I think they, I think they might even have a design review board. Um, or, you know, an element of the, uh, the planning review. You know, a planning board deals with the zoning aspects, the setback issues, the buildings. And the design review would deal with, you know, like the building treatments. You want brick, you want stone, you want vertical siding. You know, how you want the windows, you want grills in the windows, those kinds of things. Um, most small towns, the planning board is the, uh, is the one who dictates those, those, uh, those functions. Um, again, you get into larger, larger counties that, uh, they get more into, uh, you know, the, the professionals who do that kind of stuff for you. But, um, I think you just got to be very careful with it, uh. I, I'll just give you a raw example here. I mean, I'm going back, you know, thirty plus years, when I put the McDonald's in down the, down the street. Uh, that was a by right use back then. And when I was putting that in there, uh, McDonald's, restaurant, fast food, drive-thru, they were all permitted as a matter of right. And the planning board back then was trying to dictate, uh, some of the, uh, some of the architectural features with, uh, with regard to that building. And at the time, you know, uh, my client McDonald's and Shell Oil at the time, they were kind of resisting those kinds of, uh, changes because, hey, guys, uh, this is a by right use. You know, you really don't have a lot of control of the architectural features. But now you have since changes to what a CBD district or, or CBC district, I forgot what it was, but I mean, by virtue of that, I think your, your, uh, your code uh, allows the planning board to, to dictate some of those features or add a little more pressure to a, to developer to, you know, uh, to work on that.
Part of a site plan too, I think, right?
It's part of site plan view, but you, you can add a little more pressure on it because it's, uh, you know, a special permitted use is, oh, special permitted use. Um, when it's by right use, you'll lose, you'll lose all control. If it's a special permitted use, you do have more controls. Um, I do, you know, just an observation of what I've seen in, in other areas.
helpful, thank you.
Also, uh, a quick question on that price chopper. So that deal is dead as well. I mean, that, that was a, uh, that's a piece of property that's vacant down there that, uh, is dilapidated, it looks like hell. It, uh, uh, it's in the downtown, um, uh, as far as we know, that developer's done. I know there's a, some lawsuits going in.
There is.
There is.
So.
He's got financial, they, I mean, they're still behind in Great Barrington on that property, so.
And they're behind on their taxes.
Behind on their payments and stuff. Yeah, they, they owe a lot.
So is that property still under contract though?
Think it is, but then it's also tied up in the lawsuit, so.
There's a parking lawsuit with the neighbor.
Right, but the contract, the contract's gonna timeout somewhere along the way, it's got to.
It's got to. The, the option has to timeout for sure. So, okay, um.
Okay, well, that's all I need, thanks.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think on our end though, as a planning board, if let's watch, see how the master plan comes out, but if we're looking at more downtown housing, we're gonna have to look at our density numbers. Because our density numbers are very antiquated.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, um, we heard from Gordon Bailey at our last meeting. He came in and told us, uh, that he's very much personally in favor of finding ways to liberalize some of our housing. That basically we have fifty-year-old zoning that was designed for automobiles and adapted from New Jersey. And, you know, we think it's wonderful, but the history of it is that it wasn't necessarily really designed here. Uh, and, um, so I think, I think that, my sense of the master plan group is that they really like the idea of a walkable, community-ish downtown. But the idea has come up already, and it's independently of maybe there should be other high concentration areas like at the Graylock Mill. I think somebody even mentioned that last week, I can't be sure. Uh, but as to whether we try to lower the, uh, or lower the lot sizes, I think that would be more controversial, but I don't know. I don't have a sense of whether the committee would want to recommend reducing lot size.
Besides CR, all our lot sizes are pretty reasonable.
Yeah, compared to lots of places.
Yeah, I mean, CR is the only one that, that
Yeah.
Acres.
What about density requirements? That's, that's the other issue.
Yes, that's what I just, yeah, density requirements.
Lot coverage, Conrad, you mean?
Uh, no, number, number units.
How many units you can have per?
Yeah, and
Regulate on that.
And, and that was, that is something I think we're gonna talk a lot about is, I don't know if hostility is the right word, but we are certainly extremely careful about multifamily housing. And Gordon mentioned that, you know, an eight, an eight-unit maximum doesn't really make sense. And so I think there's some things that we could change that would make multifamily housing easier. I don't know if the town wants that.
I think we do.
Because it's cheaper, you know, people can afford it. If you, but you have to get over the idea that everybody's gonna be on a two-acre lot with their own house in the driveway. And, uh, it's, it's hard for people to sort of make that jump, I think.
Well, I mean, we're still post-war, um, fifties Americana.
Yeah, yeah, Lee is, Lee is very fifties, yeah, in terms of, you know, subdivisions.
Well, that's how our, our planning, that's how development all across the United States. We've been always car, car-centric.
My son lives in, uh, a very car-centric area of Maryland, about twenty miles out of DC. And I don't know if you guys have ever been down that part of the world, but it's, it's an ever-expanding edge. DC keeps growing and growing and growing, but it, but it grows by jumps. So there'll be a farm here and then ten years later you'll come back, it'll be all townhouses. I mean, as far as the eye can see, hundreds of townhouses. And, um, it's, it's different than New England. It's a lot different than traditional New England, but it's not a bad way to live. They have neighbors, kids play together on the street, there's little, very little traffic to worry about. And, um, so I think, I think we should try to decide whether we're, you know, gonna allow that sort of thing. Connected, connected residential buildings, you know, or so-called town.
So, I'm, I'm sitting in Florida right now and I'm sitting on an eighty by one hundred foot lot. And they got single family and duplexes, that's what they're doing down here. And they, they increase the density, lower the slot sizes, increase the density to get more housing units in. Uh, that's just the way they did it, you know? It's not a two-acre lot, it's, it's eighty by one hundred.
And still, still a desirable place for you to go in the winter, right?
Oh, yeah, yeah. But, but I'm coming back to the snow on Thursday.
It'll be gone, it'll be all gone, yeah.
Yeah, here's open.
Right, well, that's, that's an eight thousand.
This whole thing, no matter what we come up with on the master plan committee, this is the body that has to adopt it. And you can change anything. Or tell them, you know, form a new committee with a new person and start over, do anything you want to do. So I don't want any sort of, you know, revolt at the end. I'd like to keep the information coming in and the opinions coming in and give you what you think you can vote yes on, okay?
Well, that's a good plan.
Just thinking for reference, now that, um, what Conrad's talking about is a eight thou, eight thousand square foot. And Bradley Park, every, you, you know what I mean by Bradley Park, right? East Street? And Bradley Street, all those house, the, uh, yeah, no, that's wrong. Keep on going. Load, load, there it is.
Yeah, how big are those?
Right east of the school you're talking about, right?
They're, uh, sixteenth of an acre. So.
Yeah.
Of course, they don't give me dimensions on that.
Well, no, sixteenth of an acre is
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
The house is a quarter of the lot, right?
Quarter, yeah.
Well, this has been great, thank you.
Good morning.
But I keep coming back from a few town meetings ago when we did try to change some of the downtown zoning and how volatile that got.
It did get.
It was tough and that, that was a step towards what we're talking about here. So, so a step in density, changing. It could be, it, you can't give up on, I, I believe.
People just won't want anything changed, I'm pretty sure.
Yes, you're gonna have.
Exactly. And I don't know, you just gotta see what happens, you know, see how many votes you get.
But I mean, that's a prime, it's a prime section to use for an example. Is it the Brad, Bradley Park section?
Was that all built in the seventies?
No, that was right after World War II, yeah. Forty's into the fifty's.
Before zoning.
Pre-date zoning, yeah.
The other thing, when you talk about new developments as well, I mean, when you start, uh, going through a subdivision control program, you start building a, you know, twenty-four or twenty-six foot wide, uh, subdivid, subdivided road with sidewalks on both sides and trees every fifty feet. And the cost to put those roads in and bring the utilities in. And if you gotta have a hundred twenty-five foot lot, uh, for each one, uh, if you can increase the number of lot units, like I say, eighty by a hundred instead of, you know, a hundred and twenty-five foot lots, uh, you get more units in it and it makes it, makes it more palatable for a developer to, to make that kind of investment.
And the buyers.
They're a little bigger.
Hey Dave, check David Ave.
They're about a quarter.
That's right. Check my street up there.
Yeah, check David Ave there, he's.
That's good.
My grandfather developed it, he did, he put his name with the grandchildren, had it at the time.
Yeah.
Came their own street.
Yes, they're all, it's, it's Martin, David, Joseph, William. Uh, those are, those are a little over, most are a quarter between point two and point three-five. Acres, yep. Where Bradley Park was point one to point six.
They also, they also have individual houses, no common walls.
Right, right. Now, what, I was, a couple of months ago, I was down, um, Raleigh, North Carolina, and it is just bizarre what they've, I mean, it's the south, all of the Carolinas, Virginia. And probably, eh, you know what, I don't see it in Maryland, but you do this Main Street. And then every now and then you'll see just a, a couple of pillars. They name the entrance, it's a named development. You go in there and it'll have four wider webs going through and it's usually like a four-unit townhouses
Mm-hmm.
all through there. And that's, they're everywhere. And it's what, how level, you have the, the entry level, then a few, a couple of blocks up, you'll have the, the nicer ones, you know? Then you get into the real nice neighborhood and it'll be two units per, per, you know, two apartments per unit.
Increase in density. Increase in density.
Well, you know, in, in my lifetime, the population of the world has gone from two and a half billion to eighty billion. The population of the country has gone from a hundred and fifty million to three hundred billion.
We have, we have, we've all had kids.
We had, we don't have any more land than we had sixty years ago.
But that's, that's the, seems to be the trend in developments. Um, we're doing one in Saratoga right now and it's, I think, ah, twenty, twenty buildings and it's gonna be a total of a hundred and eighty units. So however that divides up, some will be a few less, some are a few more. They're not all even, but that's like twenty buildings.
Groups of what, four per building or?
Well. Well, yeah, probably eight. Yes, no, some will have like, yeah, some will have four units, some will have eight units, but
These things sell, people buy it.
Hi.
And that, that one's market, that's a market rate one, doing one in Schenectady, similar design, and it's uh, it's affordable housing.
Mm-hmm.
Little, similar components, though.
It's something now, a developer might do with townhouses, or something like you're talking about.
Right.
If we had the property, um,
We, our zoning does not approve it.
Well, I'm sure
It's a special permit from the selectmen.
I don't, I don't
Would you even apply if you were a developer?
Well, what if you had
Now, with our zoning right now, I'd, I'd look at that and it's like, no.
Too much of a chance.
No.
Too much, too much legal cost upfront to even get started.
What?
The, the only way you could do it is if you did affordable housing, then our zoning wouldn't matter.
Oh, under the, cause we earned the ten percent thing.
Yeah.
Well, that seems too bad, because townhouses are all over the country, and they do sell.
They work, they're efficient.
And they, and they do sell, I mean, some people might want a town, I mean, if you had a development.
Are they acceptable in New England, do you think?
Do I? I think it depends, Peter, on where it is.
Or do
On where it is.
How it's done and where.
Yeah, I think that has a lot to do with it. Where it is, I mean, I'm
You got townhouses on the Price Chopper lot, would that be okay, do you think? Just an extra?
Um, I don't know how much that lot is, gee, I don't even know how big that lot is, to be honest. Um, we always went there, but I don't know, and I'm not good with this, as far as like
I guess about ten, but maybe five.
How big?
How large the Price Chopper lot is, I don't know.
Oh, the price, oh, I didn't know the price.
Oh, I don't know that.
The town's got all that property down there also.
Yeah. It'd be nice if we could figure out a way to make whatever's done on the Price Chopper lot, and whatever's done to the north with the town property, all make one fault, one idea.
That was supposed to happen.
Was it?
Price Chopper was gonna build a new building, and they were gonna put it, they were gonna take the post office, they were gonna take Buc-E's
Hmm.
And all, all those lots, that, that whole lot was gonna be one big lot.
Yeah.
With a new store, and then spin off stuff when they did the demo.
And what happened was the big why?
Uh, that's right.
Um, I mean, that, and that's part of that development in that area is why the town bought the entire stretch, so if something comes up, we have the option to
Sell it off to, as part of a plan.
I mean, that Price Chopper, where it is, it's only one point seven five acres.
One point seven five acres? That's not much.
That's way
No, this one right here.
Oh, what's that?
Right there.
Oh, okay.
That part.
Oh.
So, but then it's, that's another piece.
Well, anyways, it's
You were gonna have close to sixty units, right? At one point?
They were, yep.
Yeah, maybe even more, I guess.
I think they were.
Yeah, multiple, close to sixty, yeah.
All right, let's get off of master plan. It was a nice discussion.
It was, very nice.
Good discussion, and we'll, uh, I think next up, we got our own zoning, right?
Mm-hmm.
Split zone, um,
That's it, he has some input on this, and since he's not here.
He's not.
Maybe we should hold off any vote.
Um, just a question I have, okay, so RA, we have, where a lot is situated in two separate zoning districts, planning board may by special allow a use to be extended to the entire lot. Are we, so we're saying by that, they could use either zone?
Um, if it's not clear, I gotta have to rewrite it, I guess.
I think
It's a single use, what I intended me to mean was, you take a use that you want to put on it, and you apply it to the entire lot, sort of implying, notwithstanding the zoning on either portion, or, notwithstanding the zoning on one portion. So you gotta, it's gotta be allowed, one of the findings, and, and it's, I don't like entirely how I did this, but the first finding you would have to make is that the use that you're allowing is allowed for the part of the lot that has the road frontage.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right, that's, yes.
Is that enough? Is that clear?
Um,
That would make sense.
That, that does make sense in your finding, I just was wondering if we want to
I just put it in the finding, cause I think that it ought to be a finding, maybe it ought to be up to eight.
But that's, that's what we're, Dick, we're saying it has to be.
Yeah.
You're, you're going from your road frontage.
Yeah, you, you're taking your road frontage uses and applying it to your whole lot.
To the whole lot.
Maybe I should rewrite it to make it a little clearer, uh, more like what it's like.
I mean, but, and then, do you even want to do findings for that, or do we just leave the findings as the standard special permit findings?
Um,
If, if we put findings here, then we get confusing ourselves again.
You know, I, I didn't review in detail all the findings, because I proposed findings, but um, I think, to answer your question, I think we should go through one through five in the bylaw, see what we think of whether they apply.
Okay.
And not, it's not really the same situation as
No, it's a little different.
It's, it's not, it's not a situation where you have a conditional use that might or might not be allowed. It's allowed, just not everywhere on the lot, right? So you could say, same five issues are present, or you could say, well, no, it ought to be easier than just getting, you know, a conditional use approved by special permit.
I, Matt, too, was, um, wanted to have the special findings, cause this was a new, this is new or different, I think, I can't speak for him, but, um, probably in the amendments. I, I don't think it's a bad idea, because it is new, go through that, I agree with you, Peter, on that.
So you agree with me that what?
Yes, the special findings are okay.
Oh, as written here?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, that's mine.
Okay. Well, we don't have to decide this tonight, but
No, no, no.
We should wait for Matt to get back.
Sure.
There's no hurry.
Right.
Yeah, look, I, um,
I mean, I'm not, you know, whatever.
You wanna review the, you wanna go over the five tonight, the normal five?
No, we'll, we'll wait for a full board, I think.
I bet you guys each look
Oh, we'll look at it.
All right.
Let's, let's look at it individually.
If you feel like there's something missing here, okay?
Right, um,
I, I continue to feel that, I, I guess this is the way it's done, Conrad would know better than I. Conrad, the idea of a special permit, it seems to me, the term special permit, the words mean a thing that you get at the end of the process. You get a permit, it's a piece of paper or a right, and it's specially awarded after consideration of certain things. At the beginning of the process, you have a proposed use, and in between you have an application, a hearing, a decision, and then you get a permit. So it's like, to say that a use is a special permit is like five steps removed from what it really is. It's like, we, we name it after the thing you get at the end, when reality, what we're trying to do is describe the use that you start with, that you're starting to ask for. And, and uh, so no wonder we're confused about, you know, everything is a special permit, and, and we have one kind of special permit that has five separate refindings, but there's all sorts of these other special permits all around, scattered around in our bylaw, that are different situations.
But they, they still fall under needing the special permit process in those findings. And those findings
Except for the one, when we said that they didn't, which was six point two.
I know, and we're still struggling with that.
Well, basically, what you have, you've got either uses permitted by, I'm just talking about uses now, not the, not the process, but the uses. You have permit, you have uses that are permitted by right, which means there's the zone, you can, you're allowed to do it by right, maybe subject to site plan approval. You have special permitted uses, which are uses that are, uh, you know, maybe more intense. Uh, some people, some people call them special permitted uses, some people call them conditional uses, or conditional use permits, CUPs, or then you have prohibited uses, which means in your, in your uh, table of uses, it might say, um, a nuclear power plant is not allowed in our twenty zone, it's a prohibited use, there's no way you can even consider it. But a nuclear power plant might be a special permitted use in an R twenty zone, which then you gotta go through the process and the findings to make sure, you know, that could be done. So, you know, the uses are second, uh, separated by, by those conditions. The special permit use, uh, special permitted use criteria is what you would apply, the, the uh, the criteria, the hardships, the findings, on whether the special permit granting authority, be it the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, or a select board, they're the ones who make the uh, make the decision whether findings are, are adequate, and it could be deemed acceptable or, or conditional, or not acceptable at all. You just gotta watch your findings on those, because they could be, uh, it could be an appellate remedy to the, to the applicant. So that's why it's kind of important that you make sure you're, you cover your bases on the uh, on the uh, on the findings. Um, yeah, I
Go ahead, go ahead, finish.
Yeah, I, I kinda looked at it here, and I, I kinda agreed everything that Peter said here, I, I, I agree that the one ninety-nine point two point five is, is the way, that's where you should put it. Uh, under A, uh, where you're saying is where a lot is situated in two separate zoning districts, I'm suggesting maybe where an existing established lot, comma, one that is not self-created by an assemblage at the time of, of the adoption of the bylaw, comma, is situated uh, in the two separate zoning districts, the planning board by special permit may allow a use permit extended uh, into the entire lot. So I'm, that's, that's kind of the way I would look at that. Under B, I was okay with that. Under C, I was a little confused, uh, C basically says the findings required under section one ninety-nine thirteen four, uh, thirteen point four I shall not be required. So I, I was kind of, al- also that it says the planning board shall grant, I'm suggesting the planning board may grant, not shall grant, may grant a special permit if it finds that the use is allowed by right, a special permit under this bylaw, for the portions of the lot with the required frontage. So I guess I was kind of questioning under C, CI, that uh, you know, basically essentially we're saying that this language suggests that with a particular use proposed within a zone encroachment, again, if you got a RB is in the front and you got an RA in the back, to allow a particular use in the RB to go into the RA for that zone encroachment, it would be like, kind of like A, if the proposed use in the front is allowed by right in the front portion, then that use may be allowed by right in the rear, rear zone. And B, it could also mean that if the proposed use is a special permitted use, that that use may be extended into the rear zone, however, that would be subject to nine, one ninety-nine thirteen point four I, because a special permitted use, again, is a special permitted use, and you, you know, be it in a split zone or in a regular special permitted use uh, application, you still have to uh, deal with the findings. So I mean, you, you kinda gotta, you know, if, if you use as a special permitted use, then that use should be subject to the, to the findings. If it's a by right use, then maybe it doesn't have to be. I think, I, that's gotta be clarified in some fashion.
I think, I think what you just described is different from what I have here. What, what this is saying is, even if it's a by right use on the frontage lot, it's a special permit to extend it to the back lot.
Uh, no, no, that, 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 that's what I was questioning, it's, under C, it says, the ref, the findings required under section one ninety-nine thirteen four I shall not be required. And then it says the planning board may grant if the use is allowed by right or by special permit, that's, that's, that's the part I was confused by.
It says, it says that the planning board shall or may, if you wish, grant that the special permit if three findings are made, and each, it has to be all three, or you don't get the permit.
Okay.
Right? So the first thing is that the right, the use that you're trying to establish is a by right use on the frontage lot.
Yeah.
The second thing is it's compatible with existing uses of the budding lots. And the third one is it's consistent with the spirit of the bylaw and the master plan. I'm not sure I really know what that means, but it's taken from the model that we had, that we sadly liked at the last, the last time.
So if it's
I don't remember where that was, you remember what town that was from, it was like
Winchton?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So if we take that as an example, if the front parcel is a by right use, and you want to extend that by right use into the back lot, is there a, there's a special permit, but are we saying the findings are not required under I?
Finding, those normal findings, as, as it's written here, the normal findings that apply to a normal special permit
Yes.
You don't apply, but these findings, one, two, I, double I, and triple I do apply instead. It's a substitute set of findings for this particular kind of special permit.
Okay, so let's use these, use that same example. If it's a special permitted use in the front parcel, a special permitted use that we, we, that would require a special permit finding under thirteen point four I
For the front lot.
For the front lot, shouldn't that also apply to the encroached
Yeah, so hypothetically, car dealer comes in, he's got a, he's got a conditional, uh, special permit use on the front, the frontage lot, and he's got a residential back lot.
Yes.
What does he, what does he need, is the question, right? So he's already in a special permit land for the front lot, for his car dealership.
Well, he's gonna need the, the five findings.
He's gonna need the five findings for the front lot.
And he's gonna need these.
And he's gonna need these for the back lot.
And that, that just, yeah.
I grant you, that, that's more complicated, but these, these are easier, I think.
They are.
They're easier, because I, you know, it's, this is what they did in Winchton, okay?
Yeah.
And I don't think in Winchton, w- we have established as sort of orthodox doctrine here, that a special permit is a special permit is a special permit, and there's only one kind of special permit. I don't think that's necessarily the law of the land in, in Winchton or other places.
I, I think we, we, it'd be, even this, this, we know, we kind of know zoning and we're confused by this, right?
Yeah, okay.
It's, you guys
Well, I think maybe Conrad, you'd like to redraft your idea.
Well, that's why I'm wondering, I'm just, I guess what I'm
Just
I guess what I'm looking at here is, I'm, I'm using that Bolinelli property as, as an example, is you've, you've got a, either a permitted use by right or a special permitted use in the front, and I got a residential development behind me that uh, I want to protect in some fashion, so it just seems like the special permit findings, the, you know, the, the four or five findings under thirteen point four I would give the planning board the, the ability or the um, the, the protections for the residential areas behind, um, rather than, rather than these, these three, I think, I don't know, I just think, it seems like it should be tightened up, maybe it should be tightened up if it's a, a permitted, permitted use by right in the front going into the back, but the special permitted use, it seems like these findings should be, should be considered. I, I just, it's just an opinion, I, I'm
Something, I think it, it, the, the possibility of a special permitted use on the front lot, and then what, what is happening on the back lot, that's something we, we need to handle.
And of course, the other thing too, I, I mentioned the, uh, in the first, uh, in two point five A is, uh, you know, we, we talked about this briefly last time, that uh, we want to make sure that uh, that you're dealing with lots that are existing today, uh, that are established lots today and not self-created by somebody coming in and buying uh, another multiple lot next door as an assemblage, and then try to, and try to use that uh, under this provision, under split zones, to allow them to do something even more expanded.
Be bad or not? I mean, it might be good. It'd be a risky, a risky acquisition, for sure, if you didn't have your special permit to start with, but It'd be a risky, a risky acquisition for sure, if you didn't have your special permit to start with, but if you got, if you, if you acquired a lot and you wanted to expand your car dealership under the lot you just bought in residential area, I don't know, it's, you know, it's adjacent to an industrial or a commercial area. I guess it's like spot zoning, isn't it? Sort of like incremental spot zoning. Conrad, I, I wonder, do you want to try to redraft it or do you want me to try to take your comments and?
Well, yeah, if you want, I could, I, I, what you've got here is a good base. I think I I'm just trying to figure a way here to tighten up, especially when you're, you're trying to define the by right use versus the special permitted use and how it should apply in this encroachment, which could be
So there's, there'd be a scenario where they could actually have to apply for two special permits.
Yeah, yeah. One for the front, one for the back.
Yes.
Um, I, I, I just reviewed the five standard mandatory findings. And I don't really see anything objectionable about them. So what I was trying to do in this draft was to give you the Winchton version, which is, which is Roman 3 under C. Um, 2, 2 and 3 under C. Compatible with existing uses and extending, consistent with the spirit of the bylaw. So if you're willing to forego 2 and 3, Roman 2 and 3, the double, double I and triple I, we could just, I could redraft it so that it does include the five findings under 13.4I. Plus, the use is allowed by right or special permit, in other words, single I, keep single I, and then make all the other five findings.
That would be more of a requirement to apply for the special permit versus the finding, wouldn't it? The use would be allowed by right or the, the road frontage use.
Um, well, say it's a requirement, who decides if the requirement has been met?
Planning board.
The planning board, if we give the special permit or not, would be if we, if they
You want to move single I up to?
I think it could be incorporated.
Finding?
Yeah, I don't think, I think keep our, our standard special permit findings as the findings.
Or just say under C, the fine is required by section 199-13.4I shall be required, not shall not be required. Is that a way?
The rest of C goes, there's nothing left of C now, except that first sentence. And we have, we maybe need a little more description in A.
Yeah, I think so.
Or do you want to differentiate the difference between a by right use in the front versus a special permitted use? If it's a by right use in the front, maybe it's okay to have it by right use in the back.
Oh, I, no, I think
That's not what they said last time, Conrad.
No, we're, we're wanting to go special permit.
Yeah.
Either way.
Yeah, yeah. I think it should be, yeah, yeah.
Say about the consolidated lot problem.
Yeah, that was, I like that idea too, because that could get out of hand. Think about it. You could start.
Working off an existing established lot and not
Established when? You mean today, tomorrow, the day?
At the time of, at the, at the time of the adoption of the bylaw. In all ways, if you're looking at the, if you're looking at your, your census map now and those, those lots are already existing. Um, and then you have a developer comes in and decides he wants to buy up two other lots to the, to north, south, east, or west, wherever. And then he decides he's going to, you know, assemble these properties and then use this argument about the, the establishment of split zones and taking advantage of that. I, I, maybe it's not a problem, it just in fact, I, I, it might have been matters, I kind of brought that up last time, I, I don't recall. I thought somebody mentioned that, you know, geez, what are we, what happens if somebody starts doing that?
I think we said last time, they wouldn't get their permit, we would turn them down, but it's probably better to, if you don't want to ever see it, it's better to tell them upfront.
Well, tell you what, this, this whole process is an evolution anyway. You know, Peter just put together, you know, a nice, nice start. If you want, I could add some comments to it and others could add some comments to it and, you know, each time we meet, we'll, we'll try to get this thing cleaned up and get a little bit closer.
Okay, well, I, I just, I'm willing to do it next, but unless you, you want to do it next. I mean, I think we should certainly draft, but I think we should be clear about who's going to do the next, the next redrafting.
Okay, why, why don't I just, why don't I just circulate what my, my thoughts were, my comments, and just, I'll insert them in there and then, you know, just gives us something to work from.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, again, you, you've got a good start here. I mean, that's, that's, that's what we're looking for. Does everybody agree this should be under 199.2.5? I mean, that seems to be the logical spot for it, yes?
Okay, are we all set?
I'm all set, yeah.
Okay. Um, yeah, I think we can find here, we get this wrapped up beginning of January, then we could post this for a meeting and in plenty of time.
Can I raise it?
Yep, I'm, I'm getting there. Yep, I'm getting there.
It's not on the agenda, I didn't
It is, it's, it's no, it's, yeah, it's not. Um, let's do minutes and then we'll discuss it. Can we do that?
Sure.
Follow the agenda? Oh, it just does say zoning amendment. No. All right, let's, let's knock these minutes out. To change the title?
The minutes, yeah.
Yeah, we have to change the title. I got caught, I was stealing from one committee to use for the other committee. I was not thorough, yeah.
Okay. So, you didn't read it over?
Yeah, you did. Although you, I'm not sure you read past the first line.
They started reading it. I get confused easily, I know that, but
And, and Beth, thank you. Fox Run, I think, I think if we look back at this in two years and nobody remembers the meeting by how the minutes of Fox Run are written here, I think it's going to be crystal clear what our intent was.
I agree.
What our concern was.
Oh, that you did it. Oh, darn it. I'm sorry, yours are just like this too.
Even everyone would have complimented me, this worked out great.
But yes, that's, that's what, but they, they look just like that.
Okay, well, I'm making sure that we accept the minutes of, I'm sorry, I forget the date.
November 28th.
Okay, um, 2022, the minutes of our planning board meeting.
With the correction on the top.
With the correction, um, on the top.
Second.
Any further discussion, hearing on, roll call vote, Peter?
Aye.
Abe?
Aye.
Peg?
Aye.
Buck Donovan, aye. Um, any other topic? Peter, you?
And then I do have one.
Yeah.
I have one, yeah. If we're going to be going to the town with a zoning amendment, I think there's one that we should consider making. This board has for many years in the CDC and in the downtown area, DCBC, required enclosure of dumpsters. And it's been done on an ad hoc basis as a condition of approval of site plans on almost every site plan that we've done for years. And the result is that there's been an occasional sort of pinch in somebody's perception of, you know, it's unfair because the guy next door who didn't come in for a permit doesn't have to do it and I do, which I think is a legitimate objection. And, but mainly, I just think that if that's what our policy is, we should get it in the bylaw. And we shouldn't just be ad hocking it case after case and and also, I, I didn't really care about this much for a very long time, but the other day I was driving down Houston Sonic Street and I saw a business that had a dumpster out in full view. And I thought, you know, that really is pretty ugly. It's a sit go.
Yeah.
It's just nothing around it, it's just up against that concrete wall. And I thought, you know, as a planning board member, I think maybe we ought to do something about that, but if I was somebody who had to spend $2,000 to put an enclosure around my own dumpster, you know, next door, I would have been feeling pretty burned by the planning board and the town. So I just think as a matter of fairness, we should either require this or not require. And I think we should require it because I think it makes the town look nicer to have enclosures around the dumpsters.
Yeah. So, that being said, you said DCBC, you think?
And, and CDC.
Okay, how about RB? Or, or do we, do we do a blanket of any, um, commercial property?
I like that one better.
Commercial property or?
Or industrial?
Commercial, industrial, or um, housing more than two units?
Well, those are good questions.
Yeah.
I don't know, I think we should think about it.
You take, um, and it, and it can't, we got, I, I think when, when we draft this, not just dumpsters, but say any rubbish containment. Because there's a loophole, because they'll have the totes. Well, that's not a dumpster. And they'll just have
Right, we never said that for the totes, right? The wheel, the wheel totes.
Once where right at the end of, oh, your street, the, the business, there was massage there, mosaic was there.
They built a beautiful dumpster.
Yep, they were, um, High, High Street in West Park.
It was beautiful, it's beautiful.
That Borzow place that you're talking about?
Keith Haring owns the building, I think.
It was where Keith Haring used to live, or, um, they built a beautiful dumpster and so
And it, and it is possible, you know.
So, so you, you bring that up because they have totes inside their
They did. We, we were, they didn't have a dumpster, but they have totes and
Oh, it's in their garage.
We put them, yeah.
Well, the totes, like I, the totes, I think the dumpsters, certain businesses, like what do you have, you have a lawyer's office and they have totes? I don't know, is that so bad or?
If you have a restaurant and you have
Well, restaurants to me
Six totes out there.
I, restaurants to me, I think should be because there's food. That's just my opinion, because there's food in there and the animals do get in there. Um, and that's can be, I know somebody that was bit by something um, when they put the food in, in the dump, in the dumpster and that was really upsetting. I mean, it wasn't an enclosed dumpster for the restaurant. Anyways, yeah, that was a good
I'm not against this, but you're making it a lot bigger. You're making it a lot more people having to comply.
I don't, I don't mind that.
Well
You're going to have a lot more opponents.
I, I
Well, we'll, we'll crunch it out, see.
Yeah. So your idea Buck is not my zone, but a, like a general requirement toward the back of the bylaw where there's performance standards.
I think so.
A commercial or industrial or multifamily use shall enclose their refuse containers in an opaque structure and enclosure.
Yeah, and then that would bring us also to do you, what if they're not in any public view? Does it matter? Or any possible public view? Then?
I don't care if it, if it can't see it, that doesn't matter to me.
Exactly, so
That's how I feel.
But like, you know, say we do get a, an apartment building and they put it around the back.
Well, what's the possible public view? Are we talking about kids looking over the fence?
That's true, I know.
Or else.
And, and if they, and the gates must be closed when not being emptied or filled.
I'll, I'll do a draft, okay?
Of course. So wonderful.
So are you, are you saying anything over, over the two units?
That was, I just threw that out there. I, I'm not sure. I, I don't know. I just threw that number out there. Um, because you know, you have an apartment building, you're going to have dumpsters.
You get a larger commercial building, you might even have a compactor, so you don't want to make sure that was enclosed.
So any, any refuse?
Yes.
Storage? Or handling shall be enclosed? Which, is that practical?
Yep. Most commercial outfits do it. I mean, if you're, if you're doing a larger, dumpsters are one thing, uh, you know, dumpster is one thing, but you start getting into a larger development, uh, you may have a compactor. And what are you going, you're going to have that big green compactor sitting out there? And also, are we talking about, uh, any, any new use coming forward or are we going to try to enforce something going on, on existing, existing properties?
I think we can enforce existing because then it turns into
So going forward?
Going forward.
Yeah, okay.
Going for, what does going forward mean?
From that day
From when this is implemented, we won't
What happens if, what is it that happens going forward?
Oh, we'll have to have enforcement in there.
No, but I mean, that's what, what event is it that's going to trigger this on the lot?
When the bylaw changes. Anything new they put in.
Anything? Okay. So the sit go down there on Houston Sonic Street isn't, well, actually they are building some stuff, but
You know, I wonder, I wonder if he changes, if he changes companies and they swap the dumpster out. If we could enforce it then.
I, I want to disagree with you about this trigger thing. I think the better course is to just delay it a couple of years. Delay the effective date. Give everybody a couple of years to build their enclosures.
Not a bad idea, isn't it?
Say it's going to take effect in 2025.
Like that.
I do too.
Can, will
I kind of like that.
I hate to say it, but we'll probably have to run it by town council.
It's all right. I, I don't see anything
If we ever, if we ever hear anything from it, who, who knows?
We hear from them, we'll, I guess we'll say
With all due respect, sir, if you hear the tape.
You want me to send it to them?
We're all done.
Okay.
It, it'll be easier then. And see if that, I mean, yeah, I gotta be able to implement.
I like that idea though.
Say okay from
People a chance if they have to spend money. I mean, it is money and gives people a chance to plan.
Then we can, then we can work on, on Xboxes as, as accessory units, right?
Oh, boy.
I already tried that one once.
Um, I did go to my community preservation meeting, if that's okay, Paul?
Yes.
Yeah, um, I, Kathy was there too. I don't really have much to say. The person came up from Boston and did the, the training course. He was really good. He, he made it interesting, which was very, very nice. And we probably won't get too much done this year. We, we, he said that would be the best way to go, but we'll see how it goes as time goes on. And his feeling or the thing I took was, um, quality of life programs, which is rather interesting, I thought. And he showed us slides of different towns in Massachusetts that have done things. And I must say, we should all be proud because many of them did playgrounds and they showed pictures of the playgrounds, what they looked like. And all I can say is, um, I think we can be happy our playgrounds are as nice as they are. So thank everybody that was involved in that, um, for it. But he, there were, he said municipal buildings may be possible to, to use some of the, um, money for and, um, just a lot of things that, those were the points that I sort of took down, but, um, this year, maybe the, the chairman might get up at town meeting and talk about what the program is briefly, and there might be some applications, but we'll be starting on that um, in the beginning of next year.
So what, once this, these funds are
Available.
Available.
Yeah.
Who, the people apply to this and who approves it?
Yes, they apply, um, and it will be a town meeting vote.
Okay.
Okay, I mean, they'll apply to the Okay, I mean, they'll apply to the, well, the committee will send them an application and will hopefully get a few, and then we'll decide, or the committee as a whole will just, will decide. But that has to go before a town meeting, the town meeting has to vote. So say we had five applications, um, Chris Britton suggested that we list them all. If anybody has any questions or if they have one that they don't think is a good application, we could take that out and have a lon, longer discussion on it. Um, he's been at the meetings and, um, he also, I think he's going to try to guide us along the way, which is very nice because, um, it does help in this, so. It was, um, it's a really good program now, it seems to be catching on in all of Massachusetts now, so. Um, and right now, we have almost, or will have with thirty-eight thousand plus the one, something close to two hundred thousand, but will probably won't be spent this year, okay? Cause we're sort of getting started, the applications, um, we're looking at and, um, we'll go from there.
Lot of towns use it as purchasing conservation land.
Yes, conservation land, poor, poor things, um, open space, conservation.
Housing too, right?
Housing and historical, um, they've done some historical things that, um, are quite nice in some towns, like I, I, or I asked somebody, like, when, um, Hillbun Memorial there in the park, would that have been a possibility? Um, I mean, the Gateway Preservation did it, and they said, yes, something like that, it would be that. Um, so, you know, you never know, I mean, what, even what somebody might come up with, um, as an idea for something.
I, I think I told you that I had experience as a grantee.
Yeah.
Uh, I, my church, um, applied to Great Barrington for funds, we bought this building in Houston Sonic. Um, nobody had looked at the structure, it was a ram sack structure that had been built in stages since about eighteen forty, different stages, and I don't know what they thought they were doing, but the, the kitchen was, didn't have any through beams from one sill to the other anywhere. And it was all just, you know, a beam here stopping on a post and another beam. And, uh, in my untrained opinion, as a guy who built a house once, the kitchen was in grave danger of falling into the basement. And we got a grant from, from Great Barrington and they, they gave us sixty thousand, seventy thousand dollars and we chatted, put posts underneath the, the footings and stuff, it was terrific.
We don't need no stinking building code.
Um, but this was just a meeting where he spoke and we asked questions.
Yeah.
Things like that, but when we have a meeting, I'm sure.
Well, you know, the only advice I have, Peg, is that when you get different kinds of projects, you're gonna find you want different kinds of information.
Right.
So if it's a housing project, there's gonna be one set of questions you're gonna ask. If it's open space, it's gonna be a different set of questions.
Yeah.
And it's hard to design an application that covers all those situations. And then when you get the grants out and you're signing a contract with the people and you say, here's some money, now here's what you're gonna do for me. Again, it's important to make sure that you decide that, you know, that the housing promises are gonna be different than the open space promises and the historic preservation promises. So that's the part that I think they fell down on, they just, one application and one contract. They tried to make it all squeeze in to fit, you know, and it, it just didn't really work.
Did I forget anything, Kent, or is that, yeah?
Okay, thank you. Okay, anything else, anyone? I think we covered a lot for a non-agenda tonight.
I know, we, we stood.
Yeah, that's right.
I know.
Every half hour, we outta here, I'm saying wrong.
Uh, one thing, I did see going on one oh two, uh, Ray Murray Building, got a for sale sign in front.
I did see that, I don't know what they ended up doing. They were all doing and came back for a change, an amendment to their site plan, and now nothing.
Needs to be another group facility.
Yep.
Oh, you know, um, I did see, could I just say too, remember that thing, uh, Mr. Smith was on George Street? I think his name is Smith, no, Guinan, the garage, remember the garage? Well, I happened to run into him and he said, this was last week, there's been no snow, we built our new garage, well, there is now. He said, we can't wait for snow be, anyways, when they were building the garage, I guess, um, the electric company hit something, uh, underneath the ground. So they had to redo, they had to, the electric company had to pay for. And he said it turned into another.
Wow.
Situation, but he, she, he said, wait a minute, I wanna show you a picture of my garage. So he showed me the picture, it looks really nice and it's an asset to the neighborhood. But he was so happy.
Good.
To have it, so I think that's a good thing we can, you know, be happy about.
That was a good one, okay.
Yeah. He was all excited though.
Yep, one more motion.
Yeah.
Good journey, so moved.
Okay, thank you.
Good guys.
All of it, thank you, night.